This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the regular August 19, 2024 council meeting order at 6:30 PM.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or corrections to the agenda? Okay, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved by Counsel Wagner is your second.
Second.
Second by Counsel Norman.
Counsel what?
Aye.
Counsel Ash.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counsel Wagner.
Aye.
Counsel Norman.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you Stephanie. Any presentations? Well, we'll move right in at a citizen of the month. I have the honors, the honor of selecting the citizen for the month of August this, this time and, I selected Nick Lynn Nolan. He's a, registered nurse care manager at Adventist Health Clinic here in Vernonia. Lynn first started here in Vernonia in 2018. Lynn has tirelessly assisted homeless patients by providing them with food, purchasing prescriptions out of his own pocket, and ensuring they have warm coats and clothes in the winter. Lynn has played a key role in helping with the transportation for many patients in the community. He has reacted professionally to many emergency situations at the clinic. Lynn has recently volunteered every month at the Nadel Grange Food Bank. I've talked with the staff down at the clinic here and they all say that they could not run the clinic as successfully as it has without Lynn. So, you'll see him walking along the up and down Bridge Street and more or less getting a little exercise, but, he's been a wonderful asset to the community and, and so, he won't, he's not here tonight unfortunately, but I'm going to present his certificate tomorrow at 2 o'clock at the clinic. And I think the, one of the, the director and the president of Adventist Health is going to be there to witness that, so looking forward to that, so. Thank you. Okay. Council committee meeting reports. Public works?
Next week.
Okay. Well, we had a, I have a report on the senior board. So, this last month, there's been some personnel changes down there at the senior center and Teresa Kilgore turned into resignation. She was the head cook and she also spearheaded the reservations at the cabin along with running the thrift shop, so. She just saw that it was just too much for her this time in her life and so her husband and herself have resigned from the kitchen. It was really neat because there were two positions available after that happened. An assistant cook and a head cook. Well, we had six applicants for an assistant cook and three applicants for a head cook. And they, they completed their interview process last week and so, yeah, I guess I could say who's new cook, it's Hobo Jack, this is the new head cook, so. Real happy about that. We also agreed with the city and Josette was there at the meeting last week giving a presentation. I'll talk about that in a little bit. But we agreed to turn the cabin back over to the city as far as rental leasing it. So, we're just working out things now so the city can can rent it out to the public and it'll be similar to the reservations at at the lake and Anderson Park. Yeah, we had a good meeting. Like I said, Josette was there for the whole meeting and we were glad to have her. She gave us an update on the, the exercise equipment that's going to be placed in Spencer Park, so. It was a good meeting, so thank you again for attending and being a part of that and and being helpful for the seniors too, Josette. Any other committee? Reports, parks?
Not yet.
Okay. Any topics from the floor? Okay, moving along, set agenda for acceptance. Set agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for August 5, 2024.
I move to accept the consent agenda for approval as presented.
Thank you. So moved by Counsel Wagner is your second.
Call second.
Second by Counsel Ash.
Counsel Wagner.
Aye.
Counsel Ash.
Aye.
Counsel Norman.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counsel Webb.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any unfinished business tonight? Moving right into new business, staff report. Project priority ranking work session. Page three.
What you have before you is a staff report brought to you by me. Requested you. An additional day that is not available is September 10th as the fire department is going to be using this room. We've already committed to allowing them to use it. I did look in the past to see when we typically had it and it was anytime between August and November, so that was incorrect. My apologies. We're right on schedule, so.
So, any, any nights that doesn't work for you folks?
I have quite a few.
Okay.
I can't do the 29th, it's the.
Avoid August?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm gone the entire first week of September through the 7th. And then I can't do the 23rd of September.
So when are you gone in September again?
So I'll be gone the 4th, 5th, 6th and 7th.
Oh, okay. How about you Dale?
I'm potentially out the 9th, 10th, 11th and 12th of September.
Okay.
So one option is we could have a short on your agenda for the first meeting of the third for you guys to add projects to the list? You could break it up into two parts, right? And then just do the results at this meeting, but are there people that feel like they want to add projects to the priority list? New pet rocks?
Yeah, probably at least one.
Yeah, I thought there were some.
So you could choose to have by the first meeting of September, your ideas ready and talk about it as an agenda item? And then we could put all of those projects on a list, send it out to you, and then you could review the results at whatever meeting you're scheduling right now. Otherwise, you're going to sit down to talk about adding projects and then have to just go away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Good point.
Because you, you don't typically prioritize together. Right? You just prioritize on your own and then send us the list and we, Stephanie tabulates it and tells you what your new order was or.
Yeah, sometimes I just brought the results and you guys approved it at a meeting that wasn't even a work session.
Yeah.
So we could do it that way.
So if you, if you want to bring, we could put an agenda item for the second.
The third.
Project, or sorry, the third.
Yeah.
New, you know, priority projects.
Third.
Yeah, because Monday's.
Labor day.
Oh.
First day of school.
I know.
Yeah.
I won't be here.
The third?
Correct.
But you could submit.
Well, you could submit.
You could give me your ones to add.
Priority list.
Yeah.
I forgot we weren't meeting until Tuesday. That stinks. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then Stephanie will kick us.
A list after that date before this.
Aye.
Yeah. Send them back to us.
Send them back.
Yep.
So you're still picking a date for the results meeting though? That's today, yeah.
So what?
I just want to adopt the changes and don't have a work session. It's up to you.
Yeah, do you just want to accept the, you don't have to have a work session to discuss the order. You can just receive whatever your collective order is in a meeting or in an email.
That way before.
We could do that.
And then we could
just add them to the list.
Is there anything still coming off? Or are you going to send us that or that already happened?
Well, there wouldn't be stuff coming off until like the next removal would be October.
Okay.
Right?
On the list that you guys tabulate, it wouldn't have a completed project on it.
No, yeah.
Yes.
If it's, if it's completed, I'll move it off the list you're asked to tabulate.
Okay.
Right, because that'd be kind of.
Yeah.
Or everyone puts it as number one because we all know it's almost over, right? Yeah.
So we'll, we'll add it to the September 3rd?
I will, yeah. I'll be bringing you.
In new business?
Yep.
Okay.
So are you guys all okay if once you tabulate, we'll just send it out or you'll have it at the 17th?
Yeah.
16th?
16th.
If we turn it around, they would turn it back to us. Yeah, okay.
So the 3rd, we're just giving ideas for new projects, so if we have ideas between now and then, I just communicate them to you.
Yeah, just send them to me and I'll bring them up when
Okay.
you're not here.
Okay.
Counsel consensus is what to add to the list.
Yeah. You can give me details about why you want it on there so I can battle for you. Put a headlock down on him.
Okay.
So just people are aware that I would be, I will not be here on the 3rd either.
So yeah, if you want to drop us a list off or call us and tell me.
So I'd like to get this list smaller.
Okay, you're not adding, okay.
Just letting you know that it sounds like there might be two of us not here on the 3rd.
So the rest of you need to be for us to have a meeting?
Yeah. Yep.
Don't fall ill or will, or do and we'll just cancel.
We'll see.
Okay.
If you guys are unsure about doing it without all of you here, we could always
Yeah.
kick it down the exact same arrangement, but to the second meeting.
To the 16th?
Bring your items that you would like to see added to the list, projects that you've heard of, to the 16th and then we could tabulate, which actually would give us an extra week, just saying.
Yeah, because the.
For you guys to discuss it because it's a bonus week and then we can bring it to the first meeting in October.
Yeah.
That way you guys are all, all there.
Present to talk about it and agree to add it or not. You want to do that?
Yeah.
So 16th and 3rd of October?
Because if a new project comes up and is discussed, that information would be helpful when prioritizing it.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll go 16th and.
So.
What is that?
Sorry.
7? October 7th?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so new items are coming to the 9th, 16th meeting and then we will get a list and we will bring back.
We will send back and we'll present it on the 7th.
Okay.
To you in a meeting to adopt as your updated priority list.
It's ready for you guys the next day.
Yeah.
Turn around and have a quarterly here pretty quick, don't we?
The next month.
Yeah.
You'd have it a month later.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
That'll work good.
Well, the quarterly is in October, so I guess we could approve it if we want.
You can't approve, you can make formal decisions.
Yeah, so you got to approve it as a real thing, yeah.
Because you guys are adopting it. 2024, 2025's project priority list.
Okay. Can I request that the October quarterly is not on that second Tuesday? You've been.
So if you guys want to.
What's the second? I gotta, I just gotta look.
Second Tuesdays. We used to do the in-between Monday, I thought, but then lately we've been doing the second Tuesday.
No, that was only, sorry, a holiday. It gets moved over.
So what, what should it be?
Right, second Monday?
Yeah, let me look on the calendar.
So that would be the 14th of October.
Um.
Is that right?
I'm, I'm trying to pull up my calendar.
Yeah, that's definitely how it was for like the first couple of years I was on council. So is that in-between Monday?
I think it only changed due to a holiday or some conflict grievances.
Okay.
If I remember right. It's when you have three Mondays in a row.
Mm-hmm.
Let's take it straight down to that.
All right, moving on.
I hear you.
Good.
Business from the departments. Ordinances and revolutions. Correspondence. City administrative report, page four.
Okay. So I feel like all these things are nearing their end. Just little heads up, when we returned the railings up to Topper, there was some section of the railing that was kind of funky and needed repair. They're repairing it for us at no charge, so that'll be dealt with. I sat in on a two and a half hour project pre-construction meeting for the ODOT ramps today, which are starting in Rainier. They look like they're getting to us the second weekend or second week of March 2025 and they plan on being here till November. What? Okay. 2025.
You got to take them in and out three times.
And Vernonia is such a big city.
Yeah. So luckily they're past Jamboree by August, so that was good. And they didn't, it was really just the heads of us learning kind of who the players are in the construction team and the consultant team because ODOT isn't running them themselves. They run with Consor, which is a consulting group. So sat in on that. And North Louisiana, so next, or this Thursday, we have a pre-construction meeting with Peel Excavating, so we're going to go start up there. Don't foresee any big hiccups in that. We received the response back from the union. They made one tweak. We're having a meeting Thursday at 8 to see if we can finalize it and then present it to council. It was just a tweak about low service numbers when they are down to very small numbers of staff. We proposed that we would let them if they're, which nobody is at this point. And we don't foresee them being at this point for about 10 years, but what they saw happen to Sean was when there wasn't enough staff for him to take a vacation, he just kind of didn't get vacation. And they wanted the right, should the budget support it, and there's no way for them to take vacation, that we would pay them the hours that they were going to lose. So typically that ends up, I think the most it's ever been when we had someone roll over and it was when they, when Chief was sick and Sean was the only one, I think we paid out 56 hours. Because that was what he was going to lose if we didn't let him roll it. So we're in that back and forth and then we'll bring it to you guys. The lake campground design, so I had a call with John. He thanked Vernonia. We got all of the documents and parts from him. And he said if they, we want their assistance when we go to construct the campground. They would be excited to do that, so. They liked working with us. CDBG springboard. The contractor is still on schedule with the work. He's kind of had to bounce around because the controls and the, all the things with the pump station, at one point electricity was coming in too high, so they had to raise the alert for turning it off and on, so they raised that, so they're playing around with it. The pressure main is working. Their goal, and I didn't talk to anyone at the end of the day, was to connect. They connected Cougar. Their goal was to connect Adam Sewer, so then everything would be going through the pump station. That's what needs to happen for them to be able to remove the pipe in the Rock Creek. Because that pipe needs to have no sewer flowing through it and be decommissioned before we can pull it out. We also have a construction meeting Thursday at 9.
So Josette, it looks like the new lines are clear up to Maple now, right?
Yeah, so that's, that's the new lines and the connections to the water services.
When do you anticipate going, finishing down Adams to underneath Bridge and are they going to bore it underneath?
They have to fix the manhole there, so they're looking at getting a permit from the city to do night work because that's going to be lesser traffic, safer for all. He, on his schedule, that crossing is slated to happen mid-September.
Okay.
But that's kind of contingent on him kind of getting done by August 31st. You know, they're kind of pinched with the in-water work window, but he still seems to feel like every, with all the hiccups, he still seems to think that everything's on track. The one thing that Counsel Webb and I talked about that we probably, and I've talked to Robert, the engineer, about it. We probably need to fashion something a little more beefy for protecting that pressure main from vandalism. So you can just, you could just take a drill and drill right through it at this point because it's just braced on the side of the, it's in brackets and it's very thick, but it's still just exposed there. So we're working on whether or not that's like half of a corrugated smooth interior pipe that we banned through the bridge to cover it so that nobody, nothing hits it, nobody can get to it or something like that. We're working on that and that'll probably get installed af, not by the contractor, just by us for protection because it's a, it's out of sight, out of mind for all of us, but with the vandalism, we know kind of happens on the backside of the trail. We don't need anything. We don't need a bathroom geyser out of the pressure main.
Robert and Chris have already talked about a solution for that too.
Yeah, they've been working on it, so. DEQ's upcoming permit, so Chris and Jeff and I are meeting next week to finalize our comment. That will come to you guys on the 3rd, basically all the things that we have issue with. One of the concerning points was Chris was trying to figure out what the constant values were in the formula because he's trying to play around the variables. And he called DEQ to ask them, what does this letter represent? And they didn't know. So they're finding out for him, but we're like, if everyone's using it, why don't we know it? So.
Chris.
The other thing that's a little bit frustrating is today, I got a fine from DEQ for us going over our chlorine in the discharge, the sewer discharge. We're allowed to be .03 million parts per whatever gallon or liter. And we were .05 in February of 2023. So they're finding us a year and a half after the violation, so I sent it to Ruben. I said, isn't there statute or limitations on this? Because I don't think you should be able to go back forever. The reality, the scary thing for me is if it was something we didn't fix or weren't paying attention to ourselves, how many days would, that's a year and a half later that that could be going on, so.
Wouldn't it be more reasonable to give a, issue a warning and then?
Well, what's interesting is Chris was honest with them when they came for their site visit and explained to them that we were putting the curtain in to slow that down, to dissipate that chlorine. And instead of, like, if they knew it was a violation when they talked to Chris in February, why didn't they just write it in March? Like what, how are you this far behind and what else are we going to be violating that you're going to send us later?
Wow.
Like, so I put a couple of calls in. I didn't get any, I just left messages this afternoon, but I was like, this doesn't make sense to me. Like, you're supposed to be trying to protect the water of the state. What are we doing? So it's a small amount comparatively. It's only $1,650 based on the value of whatever, however they do the formula. But, okay. And so that's what's going on with DEQ. And then we will be closed on the 2nd. And then you have the meetings September 3rd and September 16th.
Okay, any question? Other question?
You were going to ask us about first to sit on panel?
I was, but I was thinking, should I do it formally and let you guys discuss? I didn't add it. Once I got into this report, I, so I'm going to put out the internal posting for the chief's position. And I was hoping you guys would pick two members of council to sit on the interview. I'm going to do two members of the public and then one law enforcement that's not related that's related to not an affiliation, but so I didn't know, it's probably going to be mid-September by the time we get everything, all the things. So I'm thinking probably it'd be good if available, I don't have a date. So it'd be someone kind of promising, even if they're a working person, that they would be able to kind of take the time off. Because it'll probably be a daytime interview. Like I'm thinking 11. So I can either bring that as a formal thing you guys can do on the 3rd, if that's more comfortable and you guys could all think about how much you would want to or not want to be on a panel. But I can bring it back on the 3rd and then you guys can, or if there's somebody here that really wants to be on the panel, because those two aren't going to be here on the 3rd, you could talk about it and volunteer and say, I'm out.
I'd, I'd be available midday. Or.
I was thinking maybe
Also.
And I, don't take offense, but I'm thinking maybe one female, one male would be the most kind of even split of your council, but that's just me.
I would really like to do it, but I would have a hard time during work hours, but I get out at 3:30, so I don't know if it could be an afternoon.
Yeah, it just depends on when I can get.
Right.
Usually it's a daytime because I, that's when I can get the people that are willing to sit on the panel.
I, I can do it.
Okay.
Yep. I would, I would like to, Teresa's.
Yeah, I'll pass.
I need some more information because this is new to me, so let me figure out more of what's going on here.
Emma, do you, can I answer anything?
So is there several people applying for this?
No, so what you guys, what I was following is what we had talked about, which we are waiting for the DPSST sheriff's issue to settle, which that has now been settled. We got a formal, and I meant, I didn't send it to you guys because it's personnel, but we got a formal letter saying they are taking no action. They do not see any issue with his license because of what that report said. And that took nine months or something to tell us that, which I, I was like. So we had talked about posting internally. He's the only person that's qualified in the current staff to apply. He would be interviewed and if the interview panel recommended him for the position, then council would go into the contract that you guys have reviewed once. I think I can bring that back too. So you can refresh yourself with what it said. We kind of, Ruben took the old chief contract, took the issues out, added the community policing that you guys said you wanted and some other stuff, but I can send it to. Draft sent to council. So that's the plan I was going with if, is, if that's still what council wants.
Go for it.
So I understand more directly what's going on, so that's the main thing, so. Yeah, if Dale Rick doesn't want to sit in, I'll sit in.
Yeah, go ahead, No. It's a, it's a good process.
I'll take Donald and Susan. Okay.
Yeah.
And then once I get closer, I'll. And then once I get closer, I'll probably propose like a couple of dates, three dates to the panel members and see what works for everybody and just be here. We'll just do like coffee and some sort of, yes?
Is not the 24th or 25th.
Of September?
Yes.
Okay.
Because you said middle, it was okay.
Yeah. Well, and I think I'll be out, I have a funeral on the 22nd, so that I have to basically pull off, so.
Okay, anything else? Well, thank you, Joe Zett. So items of the mayor and councilors. Go ahead.
I had heard some complaints about that there's been a lot of recurring issue with speed happening on the roads in and out of and around Anderson Park. I don't know, I haven't been down there unfortunately to look to see what signs we have posted, but I don't know if there's a way to maybe just request some additional patrol in that zone.
Yeah, so we did put the speed reader in there and we weren't getting.
In the park.
Yeah, right across from Brittany and Jeff. And we didn't get a ton, of course, when they see it, no one's going to go that fast. We did order, I ordered three new signs to replace the brown, brown on white, five mile an hour signs. They're actual slow five mile an hour speed signs that we're going to replace those with because those kind of just disappear. And so it says, there are bikers crossing and then right below it's going to say speed and then as you turn the corner. And we did just beef up the speed bumps. They are annoying. So I don't know why it's fun to drive fast. It doesn't seem like it when I'm in my car. But Brittany and Jeff are kind of paying attention to it and getting plate numbers if they see someone, so Sean can have a discussion with people. But I haven't, other than the McAllisters, I believe it was, that posted on, I haven't heard more since then.
Well, I think there were multiple posts and then the comments kind of corroborated that.
Yeah.
I was leaving RNS one night and a car came flying through there, but on the east west. So I don't know if it's kind of the whole zone.
Yeah, or people just kind of cruise fast and they're, you know, and.
Yeah, and there's so.
It is weird how fast 20 or 5 or 15 feels when you're standing still and they're going by you. Because when you actually, like, we had the same issue going up Bridge Street and we put the radar thing and the neighbor was like, it feels like they're going so much faster than that. But they weren't, you know, so we're paying attention. But yeah, we haven't caught any specific.
Dale, go ahead.
So, yeah, I wanted to touch bases with you, Rick. Have you talked to West Oregon any on the anchors?
No, I have not.
Okay, so.
Do you want me, or?
Oh, I could.
Oh, okay.
I could do it.
Yeah, Rick was doing it.
I just forgot about it, Dale. I've been doing some.
Went down and brushed out for where we're proposing landing those in there.
Okay.
On the jungle. Still got more work to do. And then I kind of, if you're ever back there, I opened up where the anchors would go.
Okay. Yeah, good.
Would go.
Okay.
Just anchor.
Oh, good. Okay.
I'll stop in there tomorrow.
Sorry, their sideline anchors, we're going to try and network with Westo to use them to anchor the old docks in a couple of hole spots so that we expand the fishing capability. Thank you.
I'll stop at Talk Time tomorrow afternoon, so.
And then I'm walking in.
On Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday with you too.
At 11:00.
Yep.
With Donald and I.
About the sign.
Yep.
They're working on their sign project.
Project. So I'm on the priority list. Go ahead, Dale.
I've been kind of following down here on our in-stream work. Mother Nature's not helping. I mean, of all the years.
Right.
How many years in a row have we had water curtailment right about now?
Right.
And really low stream flows and then this year?
No.
So they're, they're battling pretty hard. We're hopeful tomorrow they actually get in the stream. ODFW was here today and did fish recovery and it was still, water was going over the top of their dam.
And they were like, more sandbags. And they're like, we're coming broke on sandbags.
We're going to have a sandbag. So, and just for your information, you know, Robert Bradley was here today. I, and he kind of queried me about this, well, you know, about our dam and the salmon. And I said, well, if there's too many getting behind it, we.
Yeah, we've had to do that.
I said, they aren't going to get there with them there, but I said, usually they go back downstream and hole up. But he said, he kind of sounded like if they got pushed up against the deadline and the salmon aren't here.
Then we could.
He might extend.
But we want to, we want to try and get done by the deadline.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Cross our fingers.
I think, I think the removal, the removal's not going to be the tricky part. The tricky part's going to be grinding that rock to whatever their spec or belief that the mother nature needs to be cut by. It's weird to me.
I don't know if the rest of council's aware, what they're going to do. You know, there's that natural drop in there, which is probably a foot and a half, something like that.
Yeah.
Maybe a little more. They're taking the pipe out, taking the concrete cap out of there, but there's still going to be that drop. So they're going to go, they're going to chip that down for 40 feet. It'll only be six inches above the pool height because that's what a juvenile salmonid jump height is, is six inches. Then they're going to go back for the next 40 feet, it'd be just six inches higher. So they're going to chip all that silt stone down. And I don't, not, it's not the full width of the stream, but it's a considerable amount. It sounds interesting to me. There'll be three steps when they get done.
It'll be like a fancy step pool.
I still think they should have funneled the center and got it nice and smooth and then the kids could have got on it. It'd been a giant slide.
Right?
Yeah, come on.
Mother Nature's slide. They could have get the, the kids come down in the summer and the fish go up it in the winter.
Yep.
Anything else?
Anything else, Dale?
Just thanks for the help in getting the rails off.
Yeah.
Counselor Norman.
Thank you, guys.
Earl Bart, his wife are there and put his, put Linda to work.
Yeah.
Took everybody there.
Well, it actually did. Those are heavy, the 20 footers.
Actually, what was it? Took us three hours?
Yeah, I heard more than that. I mean, we got it done in almost two.
Did anybody see the air chuck? Did you, what's his name, missing his air chuck for?
Mitch? Oh, I don't know. And I didn't, he didn't tell me about it, so.
Okay.
Maybe he found it?
He might have found it in his rig.
He was cleaning out his rig last week on Friday. I said, what are you doing? Why are you sweating so much? I'm still cleaning out my rig. So maybe he was looking for it.
We did lose one of them.
We did lose that socket.
Counselor Norman's socket, it came off mid-air.
Oh, does he, do you need to be reimbursed for your socket? Okay.
We did a little magnet fishing, but we couldn't find it.
Oh, I'll tell, tell me, point to it and I'll send case down with this big magnet. He'll probably get it.
Oh, it's right. Or it should be.
As long as he doesn't get attached to the bridge like the last time. He was like, get the crowbar. I got it attached to the footbridge. Always an adventure.
I have one more thing. And I mentioned to you earlier that I heard that Chris spent the night in his van at the pump to make sure that.
The alarm.
Fail through the night. But I've also just seen a lot of, I mean, I think we're doing really visible projects right now, but I've seen so much of our staff out just really doing good work and working together with our other agencies. You know, up on the hill, they were doing a lot of work with the fire department last week or the week before. And I talked to a citizen the other day who is not a big fan of hers and was kind of trying to talk about that, but I, I just want to publicly say that. I think all of our staff lately has been working really hard. They always do, but just doing a really good job, mowing, of course, top notch. So thank you.
All that and now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys do though.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Steph. I appreciate you. That's what we say in the office sometimes.
I.
For hard, I appreciate you.
Yeah, I think it's hard earned and I think we're really lucky with the stuff that we have right now.
I think so too.
Yeah, I totally agree. I, I mean, last month I had to go down and talk about a certain subject at, at the Public Works and I ended up getting a tour. I'd never had a tour of the water treatment plant. Jeff gave me a tour and it, I mean, if anyone hasn't done that, it's pretty awesome. And William went out to Rock Creek, showed me the pumps, both pumps, and only had one at a time and took me in and all the big tanks and the baffles. And it's amazing how much water we could produce per day. It's almost a million gallons. And you think of that.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're, we're doing about 300,000 a day, which is an incredible amount of water too.
Yeah.
It was really cool. And, you know, I, I'm going to emphasize what Sheree talked about, Public Works and Tim's doing a good job. They're all, I think we have the best crew we've ever had.
Yeah.
Mitch is real good hand and everyone helps each other, so. Yeah, it's pretty cool. I have two other things. Oh, go ahead, Susan.
No, 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 I'm sure that you're going to cover it, so I won't. I'll wait till you're done.
Okay, well, I've got two other things. Real quick, we, the Scout Cabin got a new pressure wash and stain on the deck and railings and Sven Sandstrom did that, completed that last week and it's really nice. Turned out really good. And then getting back to the cabin and Teresa Kilgore, if anyone in the near future has him, they, has a hard time selecting a citizen of the month, I'm, I'm just going to offer Teresa's name. She's done a really awful lot of work for our city and she's continuing her, all her efforts now are going to be at the thrift store. So she'll still be managing that, so. Just thought I'd throw that name. That's all I have.
So you didn't cover. Reminder, notice of position of open positions for mayor and city council are due to Stephanie, no later than August 23rd, 2024, by four, by 4:00 PM. So if you're there at 4:01, you're out of luck.
Calibered.
Does it match?
Jack Pockard.
Does it match this one or that one? Well, that one's ahead, so you'd, you'd have no problem if you got here by four on that one. But just wanted to remind.
Thank you.
And I believe there's two positions open, three, mayor and two counselors, right?
Yep. So, Donald, go ahead.
I don't know who's in charge of it, but when we had that rain, we had rain gutters overflowing in the cabin.
Oh. Oh, with the Scout Cabin?
Yes.
Well, it'd be us now.
Well, and I don't know if it's.
Yeah.
A maintenance scheduled timing, timing or.
Yeah.
Just, so let's see the cracks.
I'll have Tim and Mitch, they're going to go do the Anderson Park picnic shelter too because that got gummed up with the last storm event and all the needles, so.
And I guess probably Shea Park too.
Yeah.
With that bucket truck that makes.
Right.
Easy.
Chuck, not really. He's tall, but he does not like heights.
Oh, who's that? Mitch? Well, we, we put him in the raft in the water.
Yeah. I don't like heights either, but after you're on the end of an 80 footer for a day, you kind of get used to it.
Yeah, right.
Okay, anything else? Well, I think we're ready for an action item summary.
Okay, so I'm going to send the draft contract that you guys had approved as of recently for the PD chief to you guys for review again ahead of the panel and interview. I have Donald and Susan are going to be my interview panelists from council. I'm going to put in a work order for gutter checks and fix at Shea Anderson Scout Cabin. That's all I have unless I'm missing something.
Okay. Well, thank you all for attending and with that being said, I'll adjourn this meeting at 7:15 PM. Meeting adjourned.
Kind of rare. That's earliest meetings.